Person for the 2016 school year voted on by the school committee. Do I hear nominations?
Sure. I'd like to nominate Beth Walsh for the position of vice chair.
Any other nominations? I hereby order the nominations closed. Nomination for vice chair, Elizabeth Walsh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations. I'm gonna, I'm gonna move a little bit beyond our normal process here and go to the superintendent's report. Andre?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
So, we're gonna move it along so we get right to the most important part of all of our meetings, and that is the students. And the first thing we need to do is, we have, welcome one of our new student reps. Maybe if you wanted to introduce yourself?
Hi, my name's Jacinta Mari Velasquez, and I go to Fitchburg High School.
Okay, so you can remove the sign, the small one, and now, and now we know who you are. Because I wasn't sure who was gonna show up, so, so now we know. But, you're replacing two very important people. So, Mayor, you have an opportunity here to start off the year in a great way, and that is to recognize two of our students who have been our reps.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I want to thank for their efforts, two of our young folks who have been attending diligently for how long? Where are you? Ladies?
Bring you up.
Ladies, come on up. Yeah.
Yeah, almost two years, I think?
Almost two years.
Yeah.
Yes, you are, in fact, a Moisen, aren't you? You look just like... All right, Elizabeth Moisen, student representative. I'm honored this evening to provide you with a little token of our gratitude as a school committee and all your efforts. Why don't you come on up and we can, and we even, and we even give you your own, the plaque that you've had...
To get the cape.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you know, we spare no expense.
That's for your dorm room.
Congratulations.
I'm so excited.
Oh, be wait, we gotta fix it.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Okay, and you're just, you're just too happy, you know that?
No such thing.
Sabrina Haverinen.
That was really close.
Help you out. Haverinen.
Hyverinen.
Hyverinen.
Yeah.
Wonderful. There you go, and you too get your plaque, oh my goodness. Congratulations.
So, I want to, before you girls go, I have to let you know, remember these?
Yes.
So, tonight, before coming here, my jar was on my desk, if anybody who doesn't remember, for the holiday, I guess, these two girls gave each of us a jar, and it was a jar full of comments from Fitchburg High School students and Fitchburg High School staff, and they said, you know, when you're having a bad day, reach into the, and I actually didn't have a bad day, but I reached into the jar and I read them all, and they're really great, and thank you very much. But, when you read these, it really tells you what produced such great students like these two students, and that is Fitchburg High School and their family, so thank you.
Next, we have, oh, you wanna, go ahead.
As we always do, we have highlights where there are presentations of activities or projects that are going on in the school system, and the first group is gonna be the after-school fitness club, and that is gonna be Sue Turigny, she's gonna come up, and Sue, if you could introduce the students that are with you and talk about your after-school fitness club
So, tonight I brought four amazing students. There are over twenty in the fitness club, but these four are a good representative of our group. I started the club advisor, which is similar to an intramural position. It's paid through our intramural budget, so, but these students come once a week and plan activities for the school, for the entire school staff. They're very mature, they have awesome leadership skills, and I'm gonna let them tell you about, a little bit about what the fitness club is and what it, what we are doing in the schools. First, Elise Pierce.
Okay, so, I'm Elise Pierce, and I'm one of the three eighth grade students in the fitness club, and the fitness club is an after-school club here at Memorial that meets on Thursdays in the gym, and it's made up of responsible leaders who help promote exercise and healthy eating in our school community. Meetings, our meetings usually start off with exercise, like, to warm up, and then we plan activities that we'll do at the school, and the activities, like, get kids active or trying healthy foods. We partner with Fuel Up to Play 60. Do you guys know what Fuel Up to Play 60 is?
No.
No.
I do not.
Yes, you can tell us.
So, Fuel Up to Play 60 is a...
Wait, 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 slow down. What is it, how's it go?
Fuel Up to Play 60.
Fuel Up?
Fuel Up to Play 60.
Fuel Up to Play 60.
Yeah, so, they're an organization that works with the NFL that promotes healthy eating and exercise in schools, and the name means fuel up to eat healthy, to play sixty or get sixty minutes of exercise a day. And all fitness club members are student ambassadors, so, we promote the ideas of Fuel Up to Play 60 in the school, and we do their plays, that they're called, which are things that we do in schools to make it a healthier place, and they're gonna tell you more about the plays that we do. So, we have about twenty students in fitness club, and we have kids from all grades, five through eight, which is cool. I've been in fitness club for a couple of years, and I've gotten many opportunities, like, going to Gillette Stadium for a leadership summit through Fuel Up to Play 60, so, that's kind of an overview of the things we do.
Okay, this is Kayden Scopaletti. Kayden was a Fuel Up to Play 60 student ambassador for the state of Massachusetts. She had the opportunity to go to Chicago this past summer for her leadership, leadership summit, but she's gonna tell you a little bit more about what, what we've been working on since we've returned from Chicago.
So, we've been working on two Fuel Up to Play 60 challenges, and they were two videos that we did, and one video was for the Action for Healthy Kids program, and we had to show how, in a one-minute video, how Memorial promotes our breakfast programs, schoolwide, and then the other video was our, for Fuel Up to Play 60, and we had to show our NFL team pride and how Memorial gets active and eats healthy. And then what we have, one of the events that we have planned is on February 11th from six to eight here in the new gym, and it's called the Valentine's Video Dance. So, there will be healthy foods there, and on the wall, we'll be projecting Just Dance videos, and then there will be a dance-off, and kids can get into small groups, practice on their own time, and prepare a small dance to compete with, and it'll be a lot of fun and the whole school is invited.
As part of our video competition, we were gonna present it tonight, but we're still working on some media releases, but...
Maybe next time, huh?
Maybe next time, but however, if we do win, we get a visit from an NFL player to the school, which is really cool, and there were only, last time I checked, two entries from New England, so...
Really?
You have a really good chance.
Your odds are really good.
We're working on those media releases. So, next, I'd like to introduce Avriana Fusco.
Hello. So, in the fitness club, we, we conduct many plays, as we, as we would call it. One of the plays we have brainstormed about and are going to start putting together is called The Hundred Mile Club, and The Hundred Mile Club innovates children to get their mileage, so, they would get a pedometer, or they would use their pedometers during an academic enrichment time, where they would walk around and do activities so that they can get to a hundred miles. With that, they can earn points to get different prizes, as you would say, which children would love to work towards. Another play we've been talking about is putting on a showcase in the talent show, and we would create a piece to a certain song, and we would show how we are, as a fitness club, active and put together a presentation on our own time, and creating something that shows how we all work together to create one giant piece. Also, later in February?
In March.
In March, March 3rd. We will be having a faculty basketball meeting.
Basketball meeting.
Basketball game, which is placing the faculty against the students on the basketball teams, so, it'll be the students against the teachers and staff.
Yeah, I'll be up at the emergency room after that one.
Us as fitness club, we will be helping sell tickets, working concession, so, helping out everything else going on around the game, so, we're all together.
I'd also like to introduce Olivia Tran, and Olivia Tran is gonna talk about what it's like to be a student ambassador for Fuel Up to Play 60.
So, when you're an ambassador, you get to report more plays and do more challenges, which also helps you get points, and being an ambassador, you can also apply to be the state ambassador, which is a huge achievement, if you wanna be like, and, I don't know how, sorry. If you, to be an ambassador, it's, you get the privilege of helping the, the fitness team and the Fuel Up to Play 60 teammates, you get to help make the plays, so you get to help work the stands, and you get to participate in the plays, and to get points for the fuelup2play60.com. You have to complete challenges, mini lessons and plays, and report your plays, and so, some examples of the challenges are to try new vegetables, or to complete new act, active activities, and to report plays are like our students versus faculty and staff basketball games, you report that and get more points to become a higher ambassador, and, yeah.
So, one of the, most of the students that are part of the fitness club also enroll in Fuel Up to Play 60 because we kinda work together with that program, and if you go in and challenge yourself, there's what they call healthy eating plays and physical activity plays, and if you create a play, or if you look in their booklet of all the different ones that you can do for your school, like, a hundred mile club's an example of one, if you take on that challenge and then report back, you get points. If we have students collect over forty-five thousand points, we need three, we have, we're put into a raffle or a chant, and we could have Devin McCordy visit our school. We now have five students, we only needed three, we have five that are over forty-five thousand points, so that's just a, that's just a part of it. Some of them are individual challenges that give you points, and some of them are schoolwide challenges, and that's what these girls are involved in, they're involved in just helping out the school and making healthy choices. Last week, we had a visit from Hillary Staniford, the registered dietitian for the district, and they serve as a focus study group for her, so she'll come in and ask all kinds of questions about our lunches, our breakfast, so these are the students that get a chance to have a voice and say, you know, we don't like that breakfast, or we don't care for, you know, this breakfast bar because it's too mushy, or we don't like that our, you know, chicken is cold when we get it, you know, on the line, or what. So, she takes down all those notices and then goes back and tries to make changes in the cafeteria, so these are the girls that generate that change. Does anybody have any questions for our...
I have a question. First of all, great job, girls, and how long?
You get to make one hundred miles. Like, what's the timeframe to have to get to a hundred miles?
Well, you can answer that if you think you know the answers.
We're starting it this month, and it's gonna go till the end of the school year, and during our intervention time, kids can go to the gym and walk around, or we can also track points that they do for things outside, so we'll convert dance classes, or skiing, or something like that into points, like, into miles, and then they can get, track their miles.
Perfect answer, yeah. So, what we're asking is that students have to have a permission slip signed by their parent, but also by their intervention teacher, so we have a, a block that's about twenty-two to twenty-five minutes based around the lunch block, so sometimes kids need additional support, so they go off for additional supports prior to lunch, others go just after lunch, and then there's a remaining group of students that are doing extra work that this teachers have them, but if they have permission from their teacher during that intervention block, they can come to the gym and wa, and walk. Some of our students that don't have PE are not involved in physical activities during the day because we don't have recess, and some of our students really need to burn off some energy, so that intervention is also used in a very positive way for all students. So, yeah, we, we're trying to get our students to move. Great.
Thank you, ladies, you're doing a wonderful job for our school system.
And Kayden, are you still ambassador this year? When does that end? At the end of the school year?
July, when they pick a new ambassador to go to the summit.
Well, you've been a wonderful ambassador for us. And thank you, Mrs. Turigny, and thank your parents.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, next, I'd like to invite two of the teachers from Memorial, Chris Landry and Kim Emerson, are gonna come up here and introduce the students they have with them and the work that they're doing on the after-school, middle-school yearbook club.
Hello, so, I'm Chris Landry, this is Kim Emerson, we are co-advisors for the yearbook committee, 'cause it's just too big for one person to do. Thankfully, we have a lot of great students who help us out, this is Ava and Tatum, and they also help us out, they're eighth and seventh graders that work with us, and our main goal pretty much is to produce a yearbook for students and parents to buy. We make no money on this, every single dollar goes to the yearbook company so that you can get the best product possible. We picked it up, what, three years ago?
Three years ago.
And we were talking today about how we think, since we've picked it up, we've made a much, no offense to the prior advisor, but we've made a much better product than Memorial has had in a while, so, Kim has some examples, do you wanna show some?
Sure. So, this is an older yearbook from 2010, 2011, and this is our yearbook from this past year. You can opt up and get hardcover, or you can stay with the softcover. This was our softcover that we, this was our first softcover one that we made, and we did this one. We use, we've been using Life Touch, which is the photography group that does all the regular student pictures. Some of them, this is the older one, the paperback, a few less pages, some of the pages, this one happened to be color inside, but this is one of our newer ones.
Nice.
So, one of these, let's see, this one is all black and white, so this is an older model as well. We've done a lot with our design. The photography group will actually put all the pictures in, and then we, as staff and students, we go through, we check the names with the pictures, and then in the backs of our yearbooks, we do these splash pages, and those are to highlight all the activities that are happening at the school, so we, depending on how many pictures we get, is how we design all these. These are all free, freely done between the students and Mr. Landry and myself. Our students are the photographers, we make special press passes for them, and then they can go and attend the Christmas fair for extra time and take pictures there, or they can go to the basketball game and take some pictures at the basketball, or if there's a activity in the auditorium, or when they do their Fuel Up, we have kids around taking pictures. We encourage teachers to let us know when they have an activity going in their classroom. Science classes are always the best ones to go and get pictures of kids with the goggles in the science experiments, so we try to get all those pictures, and then they upload them to us, Mr. Landry and myself. Everybody uses their cellphones now, and most of the kids have iPhones, so it's actually great. They take their pictures, they send them to Mr. Landry, to his iPad and laptop, and they get uploaded into Dropbox, which is a place you can, central location for all your pictures, and then we pull those and put those in the yearbook.
Getting students to buy is a, is a hassle sometimes, so Ava and Tatum are gonna talk about their very clever advertising strategy this year.
So, we started off really basic, you know, trying to get kids to get interested in buying your books, I mean, we went on the internet, and we were making memes saying, "Buy your book because you're awesome," and we would advertise the price and the due date, and we noticed that some kids actually started getting interested in buying the yearbooks, right?
Yeah.
Can you explain to people what a meme is, if they don't know what a meme is?
Um, it's like, it's a picture with a phrase on the top and the bottom, it's trying to portray something to you, it's trying to tell you something, it's either humor or serious, it could depend on the topic. Other advertisement was on posters, Life Touch posters, actually, it said, you know, buy them on the website, or you could go to Mr. Landry's room or Ms. Emerson's room, and it gave the price and the date it was due, again, and...
And these are actually the order forms that the students can get, and then on this side gives you a list of the extra things you can buy, you can get the basic softcover for twenty-one dollars, and then you can upgrade just for five more dollars to the hardcover, and then there are also other kinds of upgrades, which you've done some of, right Ava?
Yep.
So, can you share what those were, your upgrades that you did?
Some of the upgrades, you could upgrade to a hardcover, which is like a five-dollar difference from the softcover. You could also have your picture on the front cover, or you could embold your school and the school year on the front cover. You could also get stickers, you could have current events of the year, like, what happened worldwide throughout your school year. You could also have your personalized cover, you could have your name on the cover along with your portrait, and, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Because we try to make all the money go to Life Touch, it's pretty inexpensive for students to go from softcover to hardcover pretty well, at least we've found. The hardest part for us is getting enough students to buy them because we have to make so much money to keep the shipping down, so, the girls do a really good job of helping get the word out, and then the hardest part that we have is at the end of the year, when they all come in, they all come in by homeroom. So, all the students, Ms. Emerson and myself, have to go through every single book and every single name, and make sure everybody got the one that they asked for with any extras, and where it's going, and make sure it's checked off, and it's a pretty serious inventory time, so it takes a lot of work, and we're grateful that we have the students to help us out with that.
But they do make mistakes. Last year, we got one that belonged to an entirely different school, just kinda thrown in there.
Different state, too.
A different state, different school. We do have eight members on our yearbook committee, they're all only seventh and eighth graders. We felt this was a pretty heavy responsibility, so the sixth and fifth graders actually look forward to becoming old enough to be on the committee. But, our, I'll happen to be ladies this year, too, they're hardworking, they're responsible, they are the first ones to come and say, "Oh, I heard we're gonna do this thing in science today, can I have a press pass?" Mr. Landry and I have made press passes so that students can then have permission to use their phones. We got permission from Mr. Thomas, the principal, so anytime that our students are wearing those press passes, they are allowed to use their phones in class and take pictures.
Do you, do you find that most of the young folks participate? I mean, they purchase the, do you have some that don't? I'm sure you do.
Last year, we sold about a hundred and twenty, we'd ordered two hundred, and then we were able to send a few back, and then Mr. Thomas actually, usually buys some extra ones, because what we have found every year is, as soon as the kids see that yearbook, they go, "Oh, I want one of those."
Yeah.
So, they are like, hurry, 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 where can I get that yearbook? So, luckily, thank you for Mr. Thomas, because he will buy those extra ones, and then we're able to sell them at the same price, and...
That's good, I think everyone should get one.
They, they do, they...
Shouldn't be because they can't afford it, you know?
Right.
And I know that's the case, but, but...
And Mr. Thomas is really good about making sure that he gets those extra copies that we can make available afterward, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, what's the difference between the soft and the hardcover?
Five dollars.
Five dollars.
Just five bucks, just twenty-six and twenty-one, yeah? Okay.
I understand what you're going through, I was principal here eighty, eighty-two, and then eighty-five to ninety, and that was always one of the big things, the yearbook. Mr. Johnson, art teacher, used to be head of the yearbook, and I think, I think Mr. Johnson did most of the photo-taking himself, it was, it was kinda difficult, but you've done a great job by looking at yours. I still look at mine, back when I see somebody gets married, different things, like, I remember that, and I go and look. Something that we did back in eighty-five, about thirty years ago, we, was part of the yearbook, we built a time capsule, and it is here, locate, it's on the property, buried, and that was about thirty years ago. Do you remember that, Sue?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
I can't remember where it's buried, but I can...
That's the problem, nobody remembers where it is.
That could be thirty years, I'm thinking we'll go dig it up one of these days, and I hope I'm not the last one to remember where it is, but that might be something that's...
Subcommittee, that's a subcommittee.
Nineteen eighty-five, thirty years ago.
Nineteen eighty-five.
Nineteen eighty-five. But, some of the, another little project to think about.
You guys do a lot of work, thank you so much.
Thank you, this is great.
I like that. I remember that time, it was really good.
Thank you so much.
Do you still have copies of all the yearbooks here?
They are all actually right over there on the shelf.
Okay, I was gonna say, we used to have them all.
Mm-hmm, yep, they're all there. Thank you very much.
Well, and these things can't be underestimated, because these types of things, like you saw tonight, this is what creates a community and culture in the school, and, you know, gives, gives kids an opportunity to try something, try something new.
I still have, I think, my, my...
Yeah, okay, so, yeah.
Are there boys in the fitness club?
Yes, there are.
Okay, so, I'm glad now there are boys in the...
There's not, there's not many, but there are. They kinda dropped off the planet when we didn't have the gym for six weeks.
Oh, right.
They're, they're the ones that are into the workout piece, not so much the activities, but when we were unable to be in the gym, they kinda dropped off a little bit, but we'll get them back.
Well, I noticed they referred to it as the new gym, so, that's, that's nice to hear.
I know it, it looks beautiful.
Mayor, we can go back to the beginning of the agenda now.
Oh, you wanna go back to the, okay, that's, so, that's item number three, is that where we are?
Yep.
School committee members and student reports. Well, this is my first school committee meeting, so I haven't got really anything to report, maybe next time I will, as the chair. But, the resource committee?
Resource committee met this past Friday. Mrs. Fleming and I were there, we, we had Lammerow and, okay, have to look.
Pagano.
Pagano were there making a presentation, and I think the school committee was supposed to receive their packet today, but at the, at the meeting, several of the principals were there, and the mayor, and we went over our strategic plan that we got involved in this past summer, and we do have two representatives from, Pagano and Lammerow and Pagano here tonight, and we are going to hear a little bit about it. We also, we approved our minutes from the previous meeting, and we also recommended that the items that went before the resource committee, we voted to accept them. we voted to accept them. So they will be on tonight's agenda.
Do we, do we take a vote on these, on these minutes?
No, 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 only...
All right, policy committee report?
There is nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Student support committee. That would be...
I can speak on it, sorry. So as soon as we kind of organize tonight, we have new committee assignments, just to let people know. And we'll be announcing student support. And that'll be a public meeting, so...
Okay. School personnel, that would be me.
No.
That's not me?
Not you, no. Not unless, not unless you change that till next time.
Well, that was from last, from last year, 2015, man. Welcome aboard, Pete.
Personnel committee, we've been meeting with all of the unions. We have progressed, I think, quite well with most of them. We only have the teachers' union that we're in mediation with. And we've had our first mediation meeting. And I don't know where that's going yet. I know the teachers' association keeps firing shots at us. And if you, Sentinel the other day, what I thought was just another terrible story put out by them. I just want to say, as chair of the negotiating committee, I am very pleased and proud that we extended Mr. Ravenel's contract. And he has not paid what he should be paid. And I, and our assistant superintendents, and they just have done such a wonderful job in bringing this school system up from its lowest points since when I graduated in 1958 from Pittsburgh High School. And I'm just proud of our administration and what they do. And I just hope we can continue to do what we have to for them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Need I remind the viewing public, as well as the people here tonight, that Superintendent Ravenel was selected as the superintendent of the year for the Commonwealth. It's the entire state, that's pretty impressive. So he must be doing something right, huh? You think so? I, I think so. I think outstanding job and we're lucky to have you, thank you. Executive committee. Who is that?
That would be you.
Oh, that would be me. Again, I...
Probably haven't had a meeting.
There's no, nothing to report on that, so maybe we'll have something to offer in the future. We're now called for the approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting.
Mayor, and now it's the, now the last one is the student report.
Oh, I'm sorry, student report, thank you, okay.
Pittsburgh High School was recently informed that the class of 2015 graduation dropout rates have been the best the school has ever seen, actually. And the 80% mark of graduation rate surpassed the 82% mark a couple of years back. And as well as dropout rate, which is a great thing for the school. The school play was recently announced, parody of Princess and the Pea. And I think that's something to look forward to. Yeah. Something else in the works would be the winter ball, which the juniors and seniors are working together to put it together. And I'm hoping that'll be really fun for the students and a great time for them to get together and for the community, the community to prosper. As well as attendance, it's slowly getting better, which I think is awesome. A big factor in this would be the class cup, which is really motivating the kids, especially with the competition between the classes, it's getting things better.
Can you talk about what the class cup is?
Of course, okay, so the class cup would be a challenge between classes. Points are awarded for school attendance, returning books to the library, as well as attendance at school activities like basketball games, football games, volleyball games, as well as those. And at the end of the year, points will be tallied and the winning class gets, wins the class cup. As well as something in the works by Mr. Vaughn, he's a mentor at our school, would be the mayor's internship program. Well, what that's looking to do is to provide summer internships to, to the Pittsburgh High students. And this would be a really good, I think this will be really beneficial for students looking for opportunities to better their chances at getting into better colleges. This is what the paper looks like for now. But I don't know if he's actually gotten the word out. But he, it's in the works and I think it's a good idea. That's it.
Thank you.
Just, I'd like to take the moment to point out, you mentioned the dropout rate and the college matriculation rate. And I think it's important to point out that the way the statistics were reported recently, there was a chart of all of the different local high schools. And the numbers that were, that were put in that chart for Pittsburgh were actually the combined numbers for Pittsburgh High School and Goodrich Academy. So it was a high percentage, over 11% dropout rate. But actually, if you wanted to compare apples to apples, the high school would be compared to those different high schools. And the Pittsburgh High School dropout rate is 1.3%, which is, as you said, the lowest that it's been in a while. And the college rate is 84 point... The graduation rate is?
84%.
84%, which is higher than the urban rate across the state. So it's important to look at those numbers. And there's great work going on at Goodrich Academy. The difference is that many of the students who attend school at Goodrich Academy have already dropped out of school, many of them, once and sometimes twice. So, you know, they're there, you know, with a real challenge ahead of them. And also, 40% of the students at Goodrich Academy are from non-Fittsburgh schools. There's over 50 students from Leominster High School who go to Goodrich Academy. So those students are now on our rosters and our responsibility, both in terms of college and in terms of dropout. So I just think it's important for the community to know that, you know, there's been a lot of incredible work done at the high school by the staff there to really focus on, you know, college matriculation, dropout rate, and then as you're talking about, the attendance rate. Because the bottom line is, if students are not coming to school, there's not much you're going to be able to do. But, you know, thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you, Superintendent. You know, thank you for pointing it out for, again, the folks at home. You know, you read the headlines and oftentimes there's much more to a column, much more to a situation than what's reported in the paper. So I wasn't aware of that, the alternative program and how that's tabuated as a, we own that figure as a dropout.
Right.
Yet that dropout happened in a different community.
Right.
So, thank you. Let's see, where are we?
We need, we haven't approved the...
Approval, right, approval of the minutes of the regular school committee meeting, December 21st, 2015. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Sir.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous.
All right.
Number nine, public comment.
We're going into public comment, okay. Is that anyone here that wishes to speak?
Well, I was going to talk...
Come to the center table, please.
Yeah, I was going to talk in the canine thing, but should I wait until there's discussion or is this just going to be what you were saying?
Yeah, there'll be a comment period also after the discussion.
Okay.
So, we have two comment periods on our agenda. One is at the beginning of the meeting and one is at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Do you plan to have a discussion at all?
On...
Oh, canine...
Yeah, so here's what, it's on the agenda and it's on the agenda so that if someone is to make comment during the public session of the school committee meeting, the item has to be on the agenda. So I knew that there was interest in having a comment, so the item is on the agenda. But the only conversation that we plan to have tonight was to inform the community that we have not taken, and we have not implemented this process and that there are two components to the process. One is a policy, to make sure that we either, A, have a policy now that would oversee this, or have to develop a policy in the policy subcommittee. And then the second one is, A, procedures, what would be the procedures? And those would be discussed in the student support committees. But we're kind of at a change because I think you're going to be appointing all new members of all of those committees and new chairs. And then that was the extent of the conversation for tonight.
So you want to talk about it later? I think I should probably mention now.
But some, yeah.
I mean, if you're just going to be pushing it on.
Right, yep.
Okay, so, last time I spoke, half of you weren't here, that was in December. I did want to, just a second. I did want to touch on a few points that came up. I spoke with Mr. Ravenel and...
Your name, sir?
My name is Neil Delphel. And I spoke this last week with the chief of police, Mr. Ravenel, and...
You are, excuse me, you are a Pittsburgh resident. Where do you live, sir?
I hope so.
Where do you live?
In Pittsburgh. You want to know my actual...
You don't want to know your actual, okay, that's fine, okay.
The thing I brought up was that I don't want to have the canine policing units brought into this school. That was my, my whole concern. The last time I came with just sort of a touching knowledge of what was going on and with further discussion, I've got a little more information I'd like to share. Last time there was a comment from Mr. Stevens that there was a lot of restrictions placed on you in terms of being a principal and what you could do in the school. Many of the things that came out that allow more freedom for principals have come in the last, well, since 1993-ish, many of that. Including the idea that you can strip search on certain grounds, reasonable suspicion grounds. You can bring dogs into school, that's been sort of, it's not been really touched on too much by the Supreme Court, but the federal courts have kind of helped that, that, you know, it's just been back and forth, but they've kind of gone toward allowing it. And there's a lot of other places which are irrelevant to the discussion here, which have been sort of opened up to principals. One of the big things that's come up is the term reasonable suspicion. And that was sort of like this intermediary, you're not a parent at home and you're not the police. So what are you? And so it's kind of like, you know, they had to come up with a different way of dealing with what you see in the school. Like somebody has a bottle of pills, for instance. You can't, and they put it in a bag. I mean, is that probable cause? I don't know. Is it, but you're not a parent, so you can't just go and grab it. But there's reasonable suspicion that there's something going on. So that's kind of been an opening for principals to do that. And this is what I was referring to, when I was pointing out that this is, there's kind of a carte blanche, in a way, for dealing with students, especially in terms of certain seizure. I do want to back up a little bit, though. There was, I have a couple of talking points and I'm trying, gonna try to keep it very short. The Fourth Amendment writes, the national and local versions of it might vary quite drastically. You can see this in the federal appeals court where, you know, the Ninth District has this law and the Fourth District has this law, you know, or supports this law and this one, and the Fourth District rejects this law on its face. And this, this happens all the time. Supreme Court tries to settle like a foot down and say, "Okay, this is the law." But that doesn't always happen, as you saw in the gay marriage case. There's been some, you know, contests against that statewide. So, the local idea has to sort of be us thinking about it rationally. The Supreme Court has made some rather ridiculous claims about what does or doesn't count as search. And one of those is that dog searches are actually not technically searches. They're sniffing the air around, for instance, luggage or lockers. They're not actually searching into things. They have a specific goal to, of things to find, like marijuana or heroin or bombs. And you end up with this idea that there, it's not a general, we're going to find something. So it's not considered a search, which is why they allow it in schools. Which is why you can, you can have the kids in the classrooms in lockdown and have them walk through with the dogs and search everything without any call, random, unannounced. Because it's not a search, you can also, I mean, this applies to car stops, too. If they happen to have a canine unit in the back of the cruiser, they can walk around the vehicle, even though it's not, there's no suspicion of anything. You can just have it walk around the vehicle. So there's a lot of little play there. What I want to do is point out that we don't have to abide by the limits of what the Supreme Court says. We can backtrack and say, "Okay, that doesn't make a lot of sense." I mean, this is a search. We can, we can treat that as a search. Even if the Supreme Court will refuse that and even if you can have your feet held to the fire for it, not calling it, for calling it a search. We can still call it a search because we can see that as being, reasonably see that as being a dog searching for something, you know, and it's, it's searching for things and packages. So we can restrict that on a local ground, even though the Supreme Court says it's allowable. It doesn't hold us to acting on it. It just says that you can if you want to. And this is where the police chief is saying that he can come in and search any time, any, for no reason at all, that, any part of the school. This is where he's getting his justification from. But just because you can do it doesn't make, doesn't make it make sense. And that's what I'm trying to stress with this, this canine search thing. I do want to point out, very briefly, that there's a, there's some faultiness in the canines themselves, the dogs. The records I've seen have said that 88% successful is a good rate for searching dog. This was, there's a study done in Poland that showed that, you know, when you're searching for marijuana, it's pretty good, you're going to find something that's there, usually. But there's been a recent undercover sting kind of thing with ATF. Not the ATF, TSA, at the airports, where the dogs were not finding the bombs that they were supposed to be finding, in the training. So you step back and say, "Okay, so what's the problem here? What's, why are the dogs doing this?" And there's hundreds of factors, which is why they don't really want to have tests in the field being representative of what the dogs can do. They want it on the training and on the testing that they have to do periodically. We don't have any of that data for this dog that's supposed to be searching, the Leominster dog. And they promised to bring between two and eight dogs in for searching the whole school. We don't know anything about these dogs. Dogs get old. If there's any cleaning agents put down, like bleach or ammonia, they can mess with the dog's nose very quickly and they have to take the dogs out and let them kind of air out. And they can even be poisoned by this stuff, too. So it's a real concern, that, you know, it's done right. There are, I mean, the whole idea of people bringing pepper in. Apparently, dogs, well, the shape of their nose allows them to close it off if they want to. They get a little whiff of pepper, it lets close their nose off so they can smell what they want to smell. It's kind of incredible. The whole front part of their head is nose and like the fifth of their brain is the olfactory nerve. So it's, it's a very nice device, but, you know, you have all these things that can get in the way of them finding what they're supposed to find. And there's also, a lot of it is dependent on the officer knowing what to look for when the dog, like sits down, that's a pretty, that's a pretty obvious one. But if the dog is pacing back and forth in front of something, the officer can make the call that it's, it's found something. It's looking for something that's sniffed in the area. Maybe it's in the second row of, I don't know how the lockers are formed. Maybe it's on the second row of lockers and it's only getting a whiff of it. Maybe it's on somebody's jacket. And when they open up the locker, there's, you know, there's nothing, but then, you know, yeah, faint whiff on somebody's jacket, so there's, is that reasonable suspicion? I don't know. I mean, the dog can say, I mean, with the dog pointing it, I mean, you can say it is. But there are, like I said, if it doesn't find anything and you can't smell it on a jacket, what is that? Is that a failure? And is that one of the 12% where it didn't find what it's supposed to be finding? Where it found a fault, falsely? So these are concerns you have with the dogs. And you have to ask the questions about their training and their testing. If you don't have that data, then I don't think the dogs are actually, should be brought in, even if this whole program is allowed. You should back that up. They should, they should come with the paperwork in hand if they're going to come into the school. Heroin is the key here. This is why this is being done. There's this so-called epidemic about heroin in the, in the state right now. Massachusetts is one of the centers for heroin overdoses. There are, the reason I put that in quotes a lot of times with the word epidemic... There are, the reason I put that in quotes a lot of times with the word epidemic is because there's a lot of factors calling, building up to make it this an epidemic. One is, we have more Narcan out there. In 2012, you were allowed to start to carry it. You get a prescription, you can carry it. So the idea of an overdose being like, it's right there in front of me and reported is, is much more likely. Now, this is, does, for the overdose deaths. But then the CDC in 2015, October 2015, put out a warning saying that, sorry, is it fentanyl? Is a likely culprit for many of the deaths because it's 40 to 50 times stronger than 100% pure heroin. And it's basically just a synthetic opioid. The reason I mention this is because at the same time that the deaths for heroin spiked, the deaths for fentanyl spiked. It's been being put into heroin. And they don't do a test where they distinguish between fentanyl and heroin. So if the heroin gets stronger, everybody takes it the same way that they've always been taking it, they die. This is the epidemic. It's not a heroin epidemic, it's a fentanyl epidemic. This is my understanding of it. If you look at the data, you see the spikes going up in the CDC's report and the lack of data distinguishing between fentanyl and heroin, you're searching for the wrong drug. Can a dog detect fentanyl? I mean, is this the solution? Well, actually, no. The dog does about 77% or less for finding heroin itself. The dog will find marijuana. I mean, you can be pretty sure that it will. But if you're looking for heroin, it's going to smell the heroin long before it smells the heroin and it's going to stop looking for the one drug because it finds the other. This happens. So what you do is you find the haro, oh, sorry, you find the marijuana and say that this is a gateway drug. And you start to deal with that whole situation of someone using pot and then developing further illegal habits. Except, there's a problem with that, too, is that, there was a WHO study done in 2010 that said that pot, marijuana is, and cigarettes as well, I mean, sorry, tobacco cigarettes, and drinking are all not gateway drugs. It's, there are other factors that are just as likely to be pushing this. One of those is the fact that it's illegal. I believe it's in, I want to say it's in Paraguay, where both are legal and heroin use is miniscule, but the pot use is, eh, 13, 14% of the population. Now, if it was a gateway drug, then there'd be 13, 14% of people using heroin as well. So I really dispute that, that causal thing. If someone's using heroin, there's a 90% chance of using another drug. And it's a good chance that that drug is pot. But that doesn't mean that the pot causes it. So you're looking for the wrong drug if you're looking for heroin and you find pot. You're just looking for the wrong drug.
What is wrong with bringing in the dog to find the haro, the pot?
That's a good question.
Which is a substance that shouldn't be in the school.
The substance that shouldn't be in the school.
Because that's not what was given to me as the reason why they're doing this.
Do you have children in the school system, Mr. Delphel?
Yes, I do.
You do? Pittsburgh Public Schools?
Yes.
You think this is an infringement on their civil rights?
Depends on how you ask. If you're saying Supreme Court has decided, then no. If you're saying that me personally and anybody else who has a backpack in the school, probably. And I'm talking about the people who are innocent. I'm not talking about the people who are guilty. I'm talking about the people who had nothing to do with this, you know, all the way through high school. That was me, believe it or not. And the, if someone searched my bag, I was extremely outraged about the fact that my personal property, my private areas, would just open up and, okay, we're going to go through this. You know, I have my own problems, but I don't want them discovered either, you know? And are they illegal or not illegal? I mean, well, the fact that I'm building something with electronics in one school, got a kid arrested. So, I mean, that's what I did in high school. So if I have a bunch of electronics, is that a bomb? You know, but I don't want that known because I don't want this question brought up and then my name be whatever that ends up being. So there's reasons, there's plenty of reasons why people who have nothing to hide will still consider it private and not to be searched. They have the right to do it. They have the right to do it. But that doesn't make it a good idea. There was a, there's an example I use with the gun rights. There's a lady up in New Hampshire who shot somebody who would be her mother and didn't kill him, which is great. But her neighbor said, why didn't you kill him? I mean, the answer is because it's a stupid thing to do. She had the right to, but she didn't do it because it wasn't the best thing to do. So this is why we make decisions not to the limit of law. We come back and say, okay, we make sense. And I want that to make sense for the high schools, too. They're going to be our citizens in the future. They have to know what it means to have rights, to be treated with respect and to not be told that this is something that can just be walked over at any time.
I just like to say I appreciate what you're saying and I understand what you're saying. I, I don't happen to agree with your take on it at this point. I mean, I'd certainly entertain talking more about it with you. But I think, as you said in the beginning, it has to be us thinking about it rationally and us is, is a lot of people. And so I think that it, I, I know the process from this point will be that we'll be talking about it in policy, where we do, we do have a lawyer and we do, and as you, as you've said, it's a legal thing to do. We can certainly do it. But I, your point about whether it's sort of the right thing to do and what message we're really kind of sending to kids, I think, is an important point that I think would also end up coming up in our Student Support Subcommittee. And I, I know we're organizing all those tonight, so that's probably a frustrating thing to hear, but I would like to.
It is what it is.
Yeah, and, and I'd like to talk with you further about it and I'm on that committee. So I think that would be a place to get into some of the discussion, maybe a little bit more in-depth and get the discussion that you really want because I think those are where we will move toward creating policies.
One more point, like, that's, that's fairly critical to moving forward, this and that. There was a study done by, I have to find the acronym. It's, it's one of the government agencies. It's got 15 letters in it. Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration, or SAHSA? They did a study, sorry, they, they looked at the data that was coming through about heroin use. From 12 to 17, ages 12 to 17, the inception, first usage of heroin was flat from 2002 to 2013. I mean, it bumped a little bit, but then, you know, year by year, it changes, it fluctuates, but it's basically the same percentage of all users, straight across ages 44, I'm sorry, I think it's 39 to 44, huge spike. And guess what year?
2008.
I'm sorry.
I said 2008, but no.
2008, 2009, yeah. When the housing market hit. And now it's come down, that's, that's come down a little bit, but the spike is between 18-year-olds and 29-year-olds. The people who are getting hit with heroin are the people who are most desperate. And the people who are most desperate don't happen to be in high school. You need to have education to teach them how to deal with it after they get onto the real world. How to deal with these problems. And that's not by bringing a dog in and searching their backpacks. It's to teach them how to deal with anxiety, depression, how to deal with failure and other things that nobody really wants to talk about. If you bring a dog into school, it's just going to create more of the problems that you're trying to address through the education. And how are you going to deal with that if you're bringing somebody in who, even if they don't find anything, have said repeatedly, and you'll hear it again if you ever ask the police chief, that even if they don't find anything, it serves as a warning, as somebody standing in guard, watching them. I mean, could you imagine that? I mean, you guys are elected or selected, either one.
Elected.
Well, I mean, some are selected, some are elected.
Yeah, I was elected.
Yeah, you were, definitely.
Yeah, definitely.
We all were.
No.
So, so what we're doing is sending a message, right?
I mean, this is, this is the thing, I was trying to.
We're in an environment focused on learning, right? Isn't that the message we're sending?
To what?
With zero tolerance.
Zero tolerance.
A dog's, a dog's chief sniffing just for drugs or is it weapons as well?
No, it's, it's, the one that's in Lamonster is, was, I believe, a comet that came through.
No, sir.
No?
They're sniffing for narcotics.
That's it?
Narcotics.
Okay. But you could get a dog that would sniff for other things.
If we needed to, yes.
We needed to, right.
Yes.
As a bomb dog.
If we needed to.
But it can search, it searches for bombs or explosives as well as, as well as marijuana.
No.
It's two different, two separate things.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I skipped you his last meeting we had.
Safety and security.
Same dog that was used for the bomb, the bomb search in middle school.
We don't have a dog in the city, though.
All right, I just want to make one more comment. Thirty-one years as an administrator in Pittsburgh. The Pittsburgh Police Department was one of my greatest resources. I didn't have them come in to arrest students. They came, they were there as a resource to help me help students for a safe and secure building. And I'm still looking at any way that I can keep our kids safe in this day and age. I will call the police anytime I have to. And if that includes bringing the state police K-9 unit, that's what I would do and that's where I'm coming from.
I'm not disagreeing that you do what is necessary. And I would bring the dogs in to search for bombs. I mean, I've discussed that before. There are, I have my red lines, but that's not, that doesn't cross. I mean, if there's a bomb in the school, okay, yeah, let's have the dog search.
Wouldn't you like to know if a child was using marijuana and that you could find it and you could get counseling for him and help?
That's the, that's the baited question.
Mr. Delphel, we've.
But let me, let me point out one thing. They are not bringing these dogs in to search for marijuana. They're not bringing them for that. They're bringing them because it's a heroin epidemic. And that's not the drug that they'll find.
Well, if that's a discussion, then it would have to happen.
Well, that's not why you agreed to have those dogs come in. That's not why this committee decided in December that it would be, it would be a good idea to go forward with this because they thought that the dogs would search for heroin and would find it. If heroin's not in the school age group, it's not going to be found by the dog because the marijuana will be found first. If you're looking for a solution to an epidemic, it's not here.
What we want to ensure is that substances that are not supposed to be in a school are not in a school.
This is mission creep, though.
Well, I.
We got the news here now.
I hear that's your point. I just don't agree. Because, you know, as a teacher, as somebody who's been in schools with these searches, there is a general understanding by the student body that, oh, yeah, we can't bring stuff. And you might see kids running out to their car, you know? And I, I think it's an important mission on our parts, on, on the part of a school system to hold the line when you say, you know, you mentioned you have your red lines. I mean, I think these are our lines. They're very clearly written. And I, and I don't believe it's mission creep. I, I do understand what you're saying and I would absolutely love to talk to you more about this as we move it to committees. I'm not dismissing your whole point about what other moral implications we might be kind of sending to kids about the searches or the students who might be extremely uncomfortable about those searches. I do understand that. But I, but, you know, this is a societal question, right? And these are, these are substances that are not allowed. And so I think we're.
No, I get that there's a substance that are not allowed. I mean, you can find anything that the dogs can find.
Mr. Delphel, we, we have got a jam-packed agenda tonight. As we mentioned, we're going to be putting this before the Student Support Committee. You'll have an opportunity in the future to come back and discuss this. Hopefully, we can set aside more time that you can really, we can really vet your concerns. But let us have an opportunity to first research it, put some things together on, on the side of the School Committee and these subcommittees. And, and you'll be certainly made aware of that and you'll have an opportunity to come back. But tonight, we have to move on, if you will. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
My hope was that it would actually go to, wouldn't actually be sent to the Subcommittee because it would be shown that it's not finding what it's supposed to find.
Well, I think that's, that's part of the process, is the way we do it. Thank you. We're getting back into the agenda, ladies and gentlemen.
So that would be, that would be me picking up.
Yes, okay.
So now we have Lamro Pagano were here to, as you know, they gave a presentation to some members of the Subcommittee, the Resource Subcommittee. And now the next step in this is coming to the full committee. And the work we asked them to do was to do all the upfront exploratory work in terms of assessing, you know, where we were as a district, our schools, our facilities and all of that. So without further ado, invite you to come up, introduce yourselves and present the PowerPoint. No, it should be.
I think it just went to sleep.
Yeah, I think it, it did. Yeah, there we go.
Looks good, okay. All set? You didn't need a little seventh thinning stretch there, I guess.
Again?
Okay, I'm Katie Crockett. I'm the Vice President of Lamro Pagano. And this is Eric Moore. Both of us are partners with the company. We've been there for a long, long time. And we started the study for the Pittsburgh District Facilities in June of, of last year. And the objective was to review and analyze the existing conditions and the programmatic issues that are related to your district in, in a long-range view for the planning. Our firm has over 40 years of experience. We're based in Worcester and our client base has been central Massachusetts. So we're very enthusiastic about being here in Pittsburgh and working with you on this study. Additionally, through that period of time, we've developed a really strong portfolio of educational projects. And in particular, with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, we have almost a dozen projects that we have in our portfolio. And they range from repair and renovation right through new construction, design bid build, construction management at risk. And through this process, we've developed a very strong understanding of MSBA's process. And I think we can say that our firm is held in very high regard for the level of professional service that we've provided to the communities and MSBA, in particular with relevance towards the budget and the schedule and, and really good planning. So for Pittsburgh, Eric, Eric has been managing this project. Among other MSBA projects, Eric was the project architect for Lamonster High School for their recent extensive renovation that they did there. I've been helping Eric with the programming process. And we have worked with mechanical and electrical engineers that have helped us on most of our MSBA projects. So they're really familiar with the systems. And hired a, a firm called Nezdeck, which was helping us with the enrollment projections. Nezdeck, for those of you who are not familiar with them, have done enrollment projections for decades and are extremely experienced and among the best here in the state. And as part of the privilege of being, doing this study, Eric and I got to meet the Central Administration as well as every principal in the school, many of the directors of special education. And I think it's important to point out how impressed we were with how. And I think it's important to point out how impressed we were with how positive about the future for Pittsburgh every one of those people was. And with that, Eric's going to present our, the summary of our strategic planning study that we did.
Thanks, Katie. So I, what I thought I would do would be just kind of walk you through the process of how we, how we did our assessments, kind of give you an overview of our findings and then share some of the, the options that we eventually came up with. So we, we studied eight schools. All of your, your elementary schools, the alter, alternative, high school, high school, and the two middle schools. This was our project scope, as Katie described. You know, we looked out ten years for enrollment projections. We assessed the facilities, not only from a physical standpoint, but also the educational programs. We looked at the building sites, were they capable of expansion? We developed options, which we'll discuss, and, and we, we had a lot of meetings with stakeholders, not only administrative, but also city officials, life safety officials, you know, vendors, food service vendors, others involved with the technical side of things in the, in the district. So we, we had a lot of meetings with people and, and got a lot of information. Our, our consultant, Nezdeck, also conducted extensive meetings with realtors and, and city officials and, and to get a pulse on the enrollments. We, we followed a three-part approach. We documented the existing conditions. We, we verified our needs and your needs and objectives in terms of space needs, program needs. And finally, we developed our options. We, we, we assessed the facilities on, on these, these criteria. And these, these were used kind of throughout the, throughout the project for all of the different schools. Site pretty, pretty clear cut. Exterior envelope is doors and windows and, and exterior walls, roofing, interior finishes, pretty, pretty likewise easily explained. Accessibility, always an issue because it's something that ver, often needs upgrades with, with the ages of the buildings that we're, we're looking at. Security and access control likewise always, always an issue with, with the current schools. Building systems, these are the HVAC, fire protection, plumbing systems and electrical. Finally, capacity for expansion. Can the, can the existing schools absorb an added, added population of students and expand? So we, we, for each school, this is a kind of a snapshot of what we produced for the eight schools. This is a site plan. This is Crocker Elementary. And we, we, we see the, we typically showed the parking areas, parent drop off and pickup areas, buses, outdoor play areas, if there were any, and the adjacent streets. We also had some, some information in these smaller things for soils, which would develop, impact development. And then we also produced some floor plan drawings for each, for each school. And we color coded those according to the type of space. And, and we, we, in general, we followed MSBA's space requirements or space guidelines. They, they divide spaces into, into different categories, like your, your core academic areas, your classrooms, your science labs, your district admin, your, your admin areas, your physical education, dining and food services. So there's, they're all on the, on the right side here in a legend. And for each school, we, we met with the principals and, and faculty and staff and confirmed that how much of, of each area is, is, there is in the, in, in each, in each school. And we were able to put that into a, into a spreadsheet. This is Crocker again, showing the, the various levels. So what, what we did, I'm not, I'm not going to go through each, through each school in detail, but I, I would like to share our, our kind, kind of an overview of our findings. And what we, what we did, we, we identified three schools that had the most serious deficiencies. And those were Crocker, Longs Joe, and the North Building at, at South Street Elementary School. And for these, for these reasons. Crocker had, had, the boilers had failed recently, needs to go on a temporary boiler. Accessibility, you're, you're using ramps to, to deliver materials throughout the building. You know, it's multiple levels, not easily, not easily solved. The exterior envelope has a single glazing throughout, fairly inefficient system. Longs Joe, although a beautiful historic building with, with a lot of significance in the city, has some, has some significant deficiencies in terms of a renovation project, for instance. It occupies almost the, the entire foot, the footprint of the, of the building occupies almost the entire site. So there's, there's no place to put classrooms, temporary swing space, if you will, like we did at Lamonster High School when, when that was renovated. So you have a case where you're kind of forced into doing a renovation in summertime or, or during vacations or after hours. And it, it kind of extend, it'll extend the, the duration and the cost of, of a renovation. And it, it, there's a lot of, we saw a lot of deferred maintenance at, at Longs Joe. Roofing systems, a lot of leaks. It, it's starting to show its, show its age. Accessibility and the, the systems are also generally in, in, in poor condition. South Street Elementary School and North Building, as you know, it's, it's, it's unoccupied currently. It's used for storage. And it shares a lot of the characteristics of, of Crocker in that it's, it's, it's got single glazed windows and, and failing roofing and, and finishes inside are pretty much past their, their lifespan. So those, those were the three that we've found was deficiencies. At the other end of the spectrum, we have Pittsburgh High School. It's not even twenty years old, very, very good condition throughout, you know, all of those categories, good ratings throughout, generally only minor work. All of the other schools fall somewhere in between. You've done some work in, in some of these. You've, you've replaced windows. You've taken advantage of MSBA's repair programs, windows, roofing, boilers at the West, West Building and South Building at West Street, at South Street, I'm sorry. You've also got the East Building, which is only about twenty years old as well. So that's, that's relatively good as far as accessibility. You've got some great materials that's in the South Building, terrazzo floors. Those can't even afford to do those anymore. They're, they're, they're very high quality. So that's, that's going to last you a long time. And then Rhine Gold and Memorial, similar. You've, you've replaced the windows, roofing, boilers, but there, there are other deficiencies that still need to be addressed in these. McKay is kind of a unique situation. It's, it's owned by Pittsburgh State University. So for that, for the, for McKay, we made the assumption that the university will maintain it and, and bring things generally up to, up to code and, and in a satisfactory manner. And that's what we saw when we were out there for the most part. Goodrich Academy, just to echo what the superintendent said, we were very impressed with the work that's being done there. As a, as a building, it, it doesn't really fit into the traditional MSBA high school model. The, the spaces don't really match up. So looking at it from a, from that standpoint, it, it's not, it's not going to mesh very well. It is a, it is a historic building and there are, it is, it is a beautiful building and should, it, it does need some, some interior work, make, make it accessible and, and the exterior envelope, the roofing, that sort of thing. So Katie talked about Nezdeck. Nezdeck was our enrollment experts. And they, they went through, they, they did their, their study of birth rates and talked, talked to different people and came up with projections. These are, these are the past ten years. And what this shows is you hit, in two thousand and five, you were at, at a high, high point. You came down to, to a low point in two thousand and ten and gradually back up to just over fifty, two hundred students at, at present. Nezdeck's, Nezdeck's projections are pretty level across the next ten years to two thousand and twenty-five. Based on what they, based on their surveys and, and the work they did, they estimate less than half a percent increase from now to two thousand and twenty-five. The one thing that, that we found that, that was a little blip in the, in that is that you've got what, what was referred to as a churn factor. And, and it affects thirty, we were told it affects thirty percent of the district population. And what it, what it is is an equal number of students leaving the district as, as come into the district over the, the, the course of a school year. And we, we, we understand that historically, that's, that's been kind of even number. It's, it matches up. So it doesn't really change the, the overall enrollment from the beginning of the school year to the end. But just in this short period this year, from October first, when the numbers were released to D E C and the statewide, to, to the end of November, there was a, an increase of about a hundred and sixty-three students. And that's a pretty, that's a pretty large number. And it, it warrants further attention. It's something that you should keep track of because we don't really know if that's going to go the other way toward the end of the school year. Maybe you'll lose a hundred and sixty students or so, so it evens out. Or maybe it's the beginning of a trend. You're starting to attract more students back to the, to the district. So that's just something to, to bear and bear watching. So needs and objectives, one, one of the things we use to, to gauge what your space needs is what MSBA calls a space summary template. And, and what it is, is you, you, you take the proposed population of the school and you insert it into this spreadsheet and it'll tell you, it'll spit out the, the MSBA's guidelines for each, each of these categories, core academic spaces, special ed. It'll tell you how many, how many rooms you need, how many, how big they need to be. And you can compare them. So the columns on the left are the existing, existing spaces and the column on the right is, is MSBA guidelines. So in this example, it looked like you were in pretty good shape. You had a hundred and thirty-six thousand square feet and MSBA was saying ninety-seven. But what we found and what we were, what we started to hear was it, was something other, other than that, that, that no, there isn't enough space. And we, we went back and we looked at it a little more carefully. And what, we started looking at net square feet. And what we found was that a lot of that space is used for things other than educational use. It's not, it's not your core academic spaces, your classrooms and, and, and special ed spaces, science labs. It's, it's in things like, in the instance of South Street, it's, it's district office space. You've got two and a half levels of, of space there. And so we, we, we started to look at that a little bit differently. And we, we produce these graphics that are in your, your reports that, that show each school. And it compares the, the, your space versus MSBA guidelines on the right. So the red is Pittsburgh space. What we saw was a lot of these had, had auditoriums, very large gyms and locker rooms. And these are things that MSBA currently doesn't recognize in a, in an elementary school or, or a middle school. High schools, yes, that, but, and these, somebody, Longs Joe was a high school, so it was, it's an appropriate amount of space. But you can see that there's a tremendous amount of space devoted to this other category. So it starts to skew that, that a little bit and makes it appear like maybe there's, there's more space than really is. So we, we, we followed MSBA guidelines as we, as we began to look at options. And MSBA feasibility study guidelines say that you'll study, they want to see a full range of options. They don't want to just see, you know, a new construction option. They want you to study everything. So we, we looked at a base repair option, which is kind of a status quo option. That, that is an option that doesn't create any new space. It takes what you have. It doesn't resolve any, any, any adjacency issues or, or program issues. It takes what you have and basically fixes it. At a minimum, it's going to bring it up to code. And then there's, there's other things that have to do with construction sequence that would probably make sense to do while you're, while you're at some of that other work. And we came up with a, a scope work for that. Addition renovation is a, is an option that is going to give you additional educational space. It's going to look at that MSBA space summary and, and we're going to provide enough space to, to resolve any deficiencies, any space deficiencies. And we're also going to, at the same time, do, do renovation. Option C, new construction assumes that you're going to build a, a new school and you're going to decommission something, either by taking it offline or, or demolishing it. But you're going to end up with a, a brand new, brand new space of some sort. And we looked at these, not, not from individual school approach. We looked at these as a, as a district-wide solution. So these, these, each option, we came up with a, kind of a district-wide solution. So we, we came up with a scope work for each, for each, for each school across the board. We, we also came up with some cost recommendations so, so that you could compare these, these, these various options. We, we assigned some, some numbers to them. And at this, at this stage, it's very difficult to actually pin down those numbers. We, we use, we call these order of magnitude and they're, they're really comparative numbers because at this point, you'd really have to go into much greater detail to get really accurate numbers. But we base them on gross square foot building area, overall building area. They're based on current costs. We're assuming a chapter one forty-nine CM at Risk delivery method. And that might be a little different than what you've seen in the past with design bid build. CM at Risk is, has been embraced by MSBA and allows, on a complex project such as an existing renovation, it gives you the opportunity to use a construction manager and it, it will give you some, some opportunities that you might not have with a design bid build. It's probably more expensive, about ten percent more expensive than a traditional design bid build, but it's, it's, we've had good success with it. And lastly, this, these are construction costs. They don't, they don't include some of that, what we refer to as soft costs. So this is, this is the fir, first option A. And as an example, we're, we're showing Crocker Elementary. And we're, we're basically coming up with a menu of, of items, line items, based on those categories that, that we, we described before. The, the, the plan for the base repair is, is that you would probably take some of these, these various line items and prioritize them. This is not a code minimum approach. It's, it's, there are items in, in here that you may deem to be lower priority and you would defer those for, for some time. So we're not expressing this as a code, you know, code minimum option. The one thing we, we would caution against is that there are, there are factors and they have to do with, with code man, code compliance. have to do with, with code man, code compliance, things like accessibility, seismic resistance, energy conservation, that can be triggered based on the dollar value of, of a project. So it's very easy for a, you know, relatively small, what you might think of as a small project to snowball once you start factoring in some of those, those other compliance issues. But based on the scope of work we established, and this was based on our review of our assessments of the building, our meetings with the, with staff and faculty and anecdotal comments that we heard, we, we came up with a, an overall base repair option between about 117 and 138 million. For option D is a, is an addition renovation ob, option. And the main parts of this are a addition to Crocker Elementary School, recommissioning of the north building at, at South Street. So that, that would be brought back online, create additional classrooms and gymnasium space, food service space. And finally, an addition to Memorial Middle School. And it would also include base repair scope at all the other schools. At Crocker, we're proposing about an 11,000 square foot addition at the rear. And then some additional site work to create parking and site improvements at the front of the building. At South Street, recommission the, the north building. And at Memorial, we proposed a two-story addition on the, in the parking area here would require replicating that parking elsewhere on the site up here. Summary of option B is including all of the base repair at the other, at the other schools in the vicinity, the range of 135 to 157 million. Option C, new construction assumes a new, completely new school on the Crocker site. The idea being that you would, you could build behind the existing building, complete that work and then, and then take down the existing building. We, we also assumed a pretty significant addition on the site of the north building at South Street. So that, that would also be demolished and, and added, an addition. Option C also assumes the decommissioning of, of Long's Joe and base repair scope at all other schools. So again, Crocker, footprint of the building would be in this area here, behind, behind the existing building. And then the, the existing building would be demolished and parking and other site improvements built on that site. At the South Street School, removing the, the existing north building would do a couple of things. It, it starts to allow you to create circulation for vehicles around the, around the entire site. And it also creates an access from Fairbanks Street that would allow buses, instead of queuing on a, on a public, public way, it would allow them to come into the site, queue around a new driveway system and then exit the site back onto Fairbanks. So it would solve some of the, the vehicular access issues there and it would also create some more parking. So the option C summary is actually a little bit less than, than option B, at 133 to about 140, 150 million. And again, it includes all of the, the base, base repair work at the other schools. And then the summary of all the, the options and recommendations, as you can see, the option A here, option B, and option C. And these line items, these are the, just the, the new work, if you will, the additions and the new construction having to do with option B and C. This is, this is really just the first step. We, we, we've, we've shown some, some options tonight. One of the things we, we like to say is we, we don't, we give you the information you need to make decisions. We don't make the decisions for you. We understand there's a process that has to go on here. This is really just the first step of that process. So presenting this to you tonight, our, we've, we've got copies of our full report for you, which Andre is, is handing to you now. So I, we realize you, you haven't had a chance really to, to digest any of this yet. You're hearing it for the first time. The, the second step, and, and I know that Bob Jokel is going to go into some more detail on this, I'll, I'll, I'll keep it short here. But we know that you're going to establish a facility subcommittee to, to kind of work with this, with this report. You need to really, there needs to be a process of assessment financially by the city to determine what, what type of project can be done. Very important, community input and, and impact. There's a, this is a project that needs to go to the, to the community and, and be heard. The third step, ultimately, this, this will go to MSBA. There'll be some sort of statement of interest and we're, we're aware that, that, that there is a vetting process with the school committee and city council and, and they need to vote on those statements of interest before they, before they go to the MSBA. With that, I, I will turn things over to Bob.
So thank you, Eric. Thank you. Just to expand on what Eric just said, and just terms of the timeline, I just passed around a one-stage summary of the MSBA process, which is a process that we have undergone each seven years that I've been here in Fitchburg. And as Eric said, the first step as part of the strategic plan for the facilities was the receipt of this plan, its presentation to the resource subcommittee last Friday and its presentation to the wider and full school committee tonight. Our plan is to form a facility subcommittee, much like what we used to have in the past, just to focus on this as we gather more information and look at different factors going forward. The timeline to complete statements of interest, the window is now open at MSBA. The applications for the statements of interest are due by April 8th. So sometime in March, I'll be coming before the school committee and then subsequently city council because they require their standard template votes submitted with the statements of interest indicating that the school committee and the city know that we are applying statements of interest and statements of interest only. There's no commitment, obligation, any of that. It's just that there's community awareness and support of these applications being submitted. And that's something that we've done and you have approved and city council has approved in the past. Then sometime after May 8th, and probably for the rest of the calendar year, MSBA would review all statements of interest from all the communities in Massachusetts and look and see which ones are eligible or, you know, most promising to go into their pipeline. And at that point, they would probably reach out to us, have conversations and make some type of indication of probably going the next step in the planning process, which is really what's called a feasibility analysis, which is not only more in-depth analysis of actually what are construction costs and what kind of works. And Lamer Pagano really looked at our current footprint. But one thing that MSBA informed us that we should be looking at also is any associated operating costs with any option that we're looking at. And the one that comes to mind to me is transportation. You know, where whatever option is pursued, what the impact would be to the school department and consequently city because it's a, it's a large net, ineligible net school spending item. Going back in time, back to 2009, the city council had approved $400,000 appropriation for the cost of architectural services for feasibility study and plans and specifications for remodeling, reconstructing and making extraordinary repairs to the Crocker Elementary School. Again, pending on what, how this process unfolds, that appropriation may need to be just amended just to give more flexibility. Again, going back in time, Crocker Elementary School back in 2009 was the district's, had been approved as a district priority school to go into their pipeline and to perform this feasibility study. I don't know, I can't even see most of you, but some of you who are on the committee back then worked with administration and we became eligible for stimulus funds. And MSBA started a green repair program that allowed us to fix boilers, windows and roofs at a variety of our schools. And they made dramatic improvements to our operating expenses. We saved over $200,000 a year as a result of those improvements. So now we're at the, at the point where having completed this initial phase of investigation, this document will be helpful for the school, the city and for MSBA as we look at options and, you know, any configurations or locations of schools. So, you know, the analogy that we used last Friday as we were having some discussion at our resource subcommittee meeting is this is the first step in the process. To use the baseball analogy, it's the first pitch in a baseball game. So this, the game is underway, I guess you can formally say. And, you know, I think it's over 300, over 300 pages. There's a lot, the, Lamer Pagano also brought in experts to review some of the subsystems of, at the schools. As they said, even though we've improved the, or replaced windows, roofs and boilers, there are still some subsystems that are not current. You know, they're 60-year-old buildings. So this is a great first start. I know Lamer Pagano put a lot of time putting this report together, many visits with the school principals, director of technology, special education, district administration. So conversations today, last week, maybe tomorrow, I'm sure tomorrow. But this is really, I think, the first time, probably since year 2000, where we've had an independent group prepare such really a detailed report that can help inform the path that we go in the future.
Any questions for?
Thank you. It's really exciting to look at this report. I was, I was one of the school committee members here when we embarked on this process and it was very exciting to get the green energy repair money to, you know, to make these, you know, really substantive improvements on our buildings, which other surrounding communities were not able to do. They were not ready. They certainly had the need. But now I look at the level of detail that you've put into this, I, I find this really exciting. I think it's intimidating at, at the same time because these are huge decisions. But, you know, we really have the best kids in Massachusetts. You saw a bunch of our students earlier and if you come, you know, any Monday to school committee, you'll see amazing students. And I feel our students deserve the best. So thank you for doing such a complete job and having such a clear and cogent presentation on some really complicated, you know, topics.
So the next step would be as you configure your subcommittees, there was talk about re-establishing a separate facilities subcommittee to just really, just like we did with all the green repairs and you know all the questions that come up and when do we do this to a separate subcommittee that would be just focused on working for, as you saw, there's a lot of other steps left. This is just the first step. But if you don't have any other questions for our guests here, I'll let them go home.
Thank you, Katie.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So for the mayor and Juana, you're new to this agenda. There's a section called budget items and we usually have three different types of possible items under there. One is either the, the submission or, or acceptance of grants. So we're either bringing it to you because we want to submit a grant and that has to happen, or we've submitted it, now we got the grant and we're bringing it to you to receive the grant. The second part is school choice funds. The district receives almost a million dollars a year in school choice monies that come in. And we've been very lucky that that has been the money that we've been using to really do the kind of innovative and different kinds of things, sponsor, supply, provide opportunities. We've had people, teachers come and present here and you've said, hey, well, they need money to do this or that and it's someplace to go. So those come to you on a regular basis because before they're expended, there has to be a request from whoever would like the money for, whether it's a school or if it's us doing other things, has to come here, has to be approved usually by the sub-finance committee and then it comes here for final approval. And then finally, the line item transfer. And that is if there's a school district that's looking at its budget and had put a certain amount of money in a particular line item, and as the year goes on, they realize, you know what, we're not going to use it there, but I'd like to use it somewhere else. If they're moving money within a line that goes horizontally, they can do that on their own. But if they want to move a line vertically from, say, a payroll account to a materials account, they can't do that on their own. There's a form that they fill out, it comes to us and then it comes to the, to the school committee. So there were two pieces tonight. One is grants and the other are transfers and finances. I'm going to let Paula tell you a little bit about the grants.
Thank you. We have a grant that we are submitting. And under Mass General Law, all grants are considered gifts to the school department. That's why they go before you to allow us to submit them and then to receive them. And it's for the SHINE initiative. And that's mental health and behavioral health and wellness initiatives. Pam Rivers and the high school administration have been working on that. So we'll be submitting that grant and it's $5,000 a year. And then we'll submit and accept, and in some cases, the deadlines for grant submissions don't coincide with bringing it to the school committee first. So in some cases, we, for example, the Crocker Commendation School Grant was already submitted and we've already received notice that we have it. So one is the Helping Kids Mini Grant and it's to buy hygiene kits to distribute when we have McKinney-Bento students who experience homelessness. And the Commendation School Grant is actually, from last year, Crocker was awarded a commendation as a Level 1 school last year. The grant just became available and we submitted it in this interim of having a long time between school committee meetings and it was awarded. So there'll be a program for other Level 3 schools in Fitchburg and surrounding districts on a Saturday in March or April, and we'll bring that information to you when it's.
Want to do the financial part?
Yeah. So as Mr. Stevens said earlier, at Friday's resource committee, which included Lamer Pagano at the beginning, the remainder of the meeting was to go over normal finance committee agenda items. One was a school choice request from Jeremy, Jeremy Roach, principal at Fitchburg High School, provide additional in-school SAT administration and test preparation materials.
May I ask a question about that?
Sure.
At this point?
Yeah.
So looking at that, it says textbook and interactive projector and the $9,000 figure. Is that, so it's just for those items, a textbook and the interactive projector is? And we have a, we have a separate sheet in our packet. I just didn't see a breakdown of that 9,000. So, I mean, I know textbooks are really expensive and I know an interactive projector is really expensive, but I.
Yeah. Which?
Yes, yes, for the fee.
It's for the fee.
Yes, for the fee, yes. I can't find.
Where is this?
So that, what is the fee? So that, what is the fee? Can you explain that to me?
The fee is from, whatever it is.
Okay, so he's looking at a school choice, he's talking about the school choice $9,000.
Yeah, okay.
And then we had this separate piece in our packet that, that said $9,570. It's just that, it says textbook and interactive project, projector. I just was curious if there's any other.
Oh, you know what, the, I guess, you know what, I'm wondering if the, when Jeremy put this presentation together, he didn't change the header.
Oh, yeah, it's the wrong heading.
The wrong header.
This, yeah.
Okay, so that really threw me.
I can understand it, because, yes, yes.
Everything about it is together, except for the title. That's probably from another one of his requests.
Yeah.
For all the kids that take the SATs.
Should be just crossed out.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Got it. I feel a lot better about that.
So this is, this is what he talked about in the subcommittee, and that was that by doing it this way, he's able to offer this program to all the students.
Okay.
And, and it's, I think he said, either a third or a quarter of what it would cost if we, if everybody did it on their own. But good catch.
Thank you.
And then the second item is line item transfer, which is really, as Andre said, really allocating monies from the last appropriation from the city, and dispersing about $325,000 of that to the, to various recommended line items, as detailed on the spreadsheet. And that was something that had come before not only the resources subcommittee, but also the school committee before. And this is really just formalizing the vote to allow the business office to make the transfer in the accounting system. So this is the process that we go through when we do that.
That's a, that's a substantial number, Bob. What do we, explain again, what line item is it in now?
So right now, it's in what's called the reserve for school purposes.
Yeah.
And that's kind of a, I'll call it a holding account for funds, especially after the original budget was approved, where we've put money. So there have been two appropriations from the city since the original budget was approved. So those funds went into the reserve for school purposes. So what we're doing is we're transferring that $325,313 to the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 line items, as indicated below.
Okay.
So then, when the January MUDIS reports are prepared, it's going to show an increased amount available for.
These are additional, are these additional employees?
Well, in some cases, yes.
Professional, two classroom teachers?
Yes.
They're additional?
Yes. And those were requested by Jeremy Roach to meet the enrollment increase at Fitchburg High School.
We had already talked about it during the budget season.
Are they on board right now?
Yes, yes.
And we've all looked at that.
We talked about it during the budget season, and then it was during the budget season, after the final number was, these additional appropriations were made to the schools from the city budget. So, so because they hadn't, they had, that amount of money had not been dispersed to the particular line items where they were going to be used. So now this is just a formal dispersion of the full amount to the line items where they'll actually be.
Yeah.
The cost centers where they'll be used.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's all of them.
Do we need to vote on these?
Yes, they're, they're the line, they're the action items, the next is the action items. There's, there's a request for public comment again.
Public testimony?
Yep.
Anyone wishing to provide public testimony? Seeing none, we'll move on.
May I make a motion?
Yeah.
To take 647 and 648 together for approval?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to bundle 15-647 and 15-648. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. 15-649.
Motion to transfer the money from.
A motion made, do I hear a second? Seconded, transfer those funds in 15-649. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Prove the superintendent's recommendation to transfer 325-313.
Make a motion?
Motion, second, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. 15-651.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. We go to executive?
Yes, so now you have to ask for a motion and then a roll call vote to go to executive.
To executive, yes.
Are we going to executive?
Yes, we are. We are, we are voting now, a roll call vote to enter executive session.
Make a motion.
First motion.
Make a motion.
Yeah, motion, yeah.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for executive session. Now there's a roll call vote. Yeah.
Not, not to reconvene.
Not to reconvene, but, right, okay. Ms. Padella?
Yes.
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 It's unanimous.
Yes.
Amazing. All right, we're now, executive session. We go on, yeah, okay. Boy, it's all coming back to me now.